And before I ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, can I hand over to Democratic Services for the housekeeping rules, please?
Thank you, Chair. In the event of the fire alarm sounding, please take instruction from staff and stewards. The assembly point is at Tudor Square. Please, can I request everyone to switch mobile devices to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting? The meeting today will be webcast and the recording will also be available for people to view later through the council's website. It is also possible that Sheffield Live TV will record and rebroadcast this meeting. While ever the meeting is open to the public, photography, video and sound recording of the proceedings is permitted. However, the Chair has discretion to withdraw or suspend this permission. For example, if the recording is disrupting the conduct of the meeting or is being undertaken in a manner which could capture personal information. Or in the event that a member of the public participating in a meeting objects to being recorded. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Okay, just briefly go through the agenda. Any apologies for absence? Non-exclusions of the public and press? No? Any declarations of interest? No? Okay. Now, can I ask my colleagues to introduce themselves, please, starting from councillor McGowan?
Councillor McGowan.
Good morning, councillor Peter Gilbert.
Morning, Samantha Vaughan, legal adviser to the subcommittee.
Good morning, I'm Jane Gough, I'm licensing, reading the report this morning.
Philippa Bedeck, Democratic Services.
Okay, thank you. So can I just ask the other people present, when you speak, obviously, please use the mic to speak. So can I ask the applicant to introduce themselves, please?
This is, that says that, I'm the DPS on the licence. I'm not sure, I think Halshaw is supposed to show up, but I'm not entirely sure if he's arriving a little bit late or not.
Hello, good morning, my name is Tony Clark, I'm the licensing agent and I will be presenting via the Teams meeting this morning.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Peter Sefton, I'm Chair of the Residents' Association for the City Centre called Changing Chef.
And I'm Douglas Johnson, so I'm a councillor for City Ward where the location is. And that's it, really.
Thank you, everyone. I'm just gonna ask these solicitors to outline the process for this morning.
Thank you, Chair. Can I just check with Mr Clark, and is the premises licence holder attending today?
I'm not sure if he's had difficulties trying to get to you this morning due to the weather, but obviously the DPS is here anyway. And I can answer any questions on his behalf if you want me to.
Okay, I mean, it's completely up to you both. I mean, we can obviously try and ring him and see if he's nearby and wait for a couple of minutes if it is just that he's stuck because the traffic is a little bit tricky.
Yeah, no, just go ahead without him if that's okay. It's fine, we can answer all the questions without him being there.
Okay, if you're happy, that's good, I'm happy too.
Yeah, I'm happy, yeah.
Thank you. Does anyone need a copy of the papers? Do you want a copy, a hard copy of the papers to look at? Yeah, yeah, okay. Lovely. So the hearing procedure is right at the back of the pack, excuse me, on page 51. So the licensing officer who's Jane this morning will introduce the report. If there are any questions concerning the report, these can be raised by members and the applicant. So if there's anything missing or that needs clarifying, that way we can get the record amended. There are no representatives for the responsible authorities, conditions have been agreed prior to the hearing, so they were withdrawn. So what we'll do is head straight over to Mr Sefton and councillor Johnson to detail their relevant representations. Members will have an opportunity for questions and with the leave of the Chair, the applicant and their representative may also ask you some questions as well. Once we've done with that, we'll head over to the applicant and their representative to detail the application, provide clarification on the application and respond to the representations made, both written in the report and raised here at the hearing today. Again, members and officers can ask questions and with the leave of the Chair, the interested parties may also ask questions. The applicant will be given the opportunity to sum up the application. We'll take the options from the licensing officer as detailed in the report and members will then go into private session to take legal advice and consider the application. So you are welcome if you want to wait around for that decision today. The decision of the Licensing Committee will be given in accordance with the requirements of the Licensing Act 2003 and regulations made there under. At any time during the hearing, members can request legal advice, so we can do that in open session as we are now or in private session where we'll just ask you to pop next door. We'll pause the recording and we'll then invite you back in once we've had that discussion and report back what was discussed. And as the Chair said, the hearing is in public this morning and is being live webcast and recorded as well. And that should be everything, thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. Over to the licensing officer, can I have your report, please?
You certainly can. Good morning, everybody. So here we are for a hearing for the grant of a premises licence for 206 West Street, known as Liquor Local. The application has been made by Mr Halshaw Fadil. It was received by the Licensing Service on the 12th of November, full copy of which is at Appendix A of the report if you'd wish to see that there. So the initial application was for the premises to operate as a 24-hour off licence in the city centre on West Street. Throughout the consultation period, however, South Yorkshire Police have mediated with the applicant and agreed to shorten the hours from 8am to 4am the following day, every day of the week, as opposed to 24-hour operation. So we've reduced hours and also an agreed condition in relation to door staff on a risk-assess basis are at Appendix B in the report if you'd wish to see that there. So the application's here for the subcommittee to determine, due to outstanding representations from the Green Party, Douglas Johnson, local councillor, and also Local Residents Group, Changing Chef, obviously being represented by Peter Sefton here today. Everybody's been invited to join the hearing this morning. Thank you to Tony Clark for managing to join remotely, given the adverse weather conditions we faced this morning. So I'll just scoot through to Section 8, which is the Appeal section, which states that the Licensing Act 2003, Section 181 and Schedule 5 makes provision for appeals to be made by the applicant and those making representations against the decision of the licensing authority to the magistrate's court. So the recommendations this morning, Chair, are that members carefully consider the representations made and take such steps as the subcommittee consider appropriate for the promotion of the licensing objectives. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much for that, Jane. Is everyone okay with that? Any questions with the report from anyone? No? Okay. So, as the licensing officer said, the responsible authority will go straight to the interested parties. We're gonna ask you to make your representations and once you've finished, we may have some questions to ask. So, Mr Sefton, can we ask you to go first?
Thank you, Chair. I presume that councillors have a copy of the objection document in front of them that we submitted. I'll just take a quickly through that. The reasons for the objection are, number one, the cumulative impact of excessive alcohol outlets on West Street. An expansion that can be expected to increase the current level of crime and disorder on West Street caused by the number of alcohol outlets already there and in a very compact location. We've got some crime figures coming up in a moment. Identical outlets on opposite sides of West Street leading to the likelihood of public nuisance in the occasion by people congregating through the night. And the protection of children from harm, we're concerned that the designated premises supervisor, excuse me, appears to be at the age of 18. Which seems to be rather young for an experienced DPS in this very challenging location in the city centre. So that causes some concern with regard to his ability to manage the premises responsibly and meet the requirements to protect children from harm. And you can see on the map that we put on the front page, the position of 206 West Street. And you can see at the bottom of the page that we've got three shops there selling alcohol on West Street. And over the page, we've got three off-licenses selling alcohol on West Street. This would present a fourth off-license on West Street. We've got 12 pubs and they're listed there. And then we've got the application and at the bottom of the second page, we have the two opposing off-licenses. This proposed one at 206, which has already been set up and installed with all the equipment and the name over the front. And then there's West Street Off Licence on the other side of the junction. And if I then go on to the final page, Sheffield is the only location in South Yorkshire that does not have a cumulative impact policy to control excessive numbers of alcohol outlets in any one area. And we regard that as scandalous. It's difficult to find a city or town of any size in the UK that doesn't have this form of legislation in place to govern the volume of alcohol available in a compact location. And it's clear from the crime figures which are put on the document, 170 crimes reported in October. Those are the latest figures from last year from South Yorkshire Police. 170 crimes reported in that area during October. And here we're adding another source of crime because much of that violence, sexual offences are caused by an excess of alcohol. So what I particularly want to do, just draw your attention to as members, because you could do something about the problem that we believe there is in the city centre. Changing Chef has objected for the primary purpose of pointing out that there is still no cumulative impact policy after we've asked for one for the last 10 years. And I'm speaking to you as councillors representing the city council and the officers acting as advisers to you and actioning plans that councillors request. The purpose of the Police Reform and Social Responsibility Bill in March 2011 was to lower the evidential hurdle for cumulative impact policies to allow licensing authorities to have more control over outlet density. And that's, I've quoted that from Home Office document, of which I've got a copy here and I've got three copies if the councillors would like to have them. So cumulative impact policies were introduced in guidance issued under Section 182 of the Licensing Act 2003 as a tool for licensing authorities to limit the growth of licensed premises in a problem area. And the crime statistics demonstrate that West Street is a problem area. The Home Office guidance said in March 2011, "This will give greater weight to the views of local people as the licensing authority will not be constrained by the requirement to provide detailed additional evidence where such evidence is unavailable." If we look at the four licensing objectives, the prevention of crime and disorder is number one, public safety number two, prevention of public nuisance number three, and the protection of children from harm number four. We accept that before a place opens, it's very hard to prove any of those will actually happen. Although we do have a lot of crime and public disorder on West Street. And I live close to there and have done for 20 years, so I know all about it. But there are powers through this very simple piece of legislation, cumulative impact policy, to put in the policy that enables the council to control the number of outlets, particularly the number of off-licensed outlets, which is the one that we're here to talk about. And our city council has ignored this opportunity presented by the legislation and abrogated its responsibility for the control of excessive alcohol in an already saturated alcohol area. It's the only council in South Yorkshire not to have taken on a cumulative impact policy. And if we look at the region from Manchester to Leeds to Hull and down to Nottingham and Derby, every council in that area of any size has a cumulative impact policy for certain parts of its city or town. But we don't. We've been banging away at this for 10 years and we've made absolutely no progress. You as a council, we as a council, are bringing in 30,000 people to live in the city centre. That's what all the new development's about. It's the new housing area for Sheffield and it will be the most densely populated housing area in the region. But at the same time, you're allowing off-licenses to come. We've got three on West Street, we'll have four. If three shops came empty, we'd have three more, we'd have seven. You've taken no powers over all these years to control the number of off-licenses in alcohol-saturated areas. We don't have a problem with the pubs, they're well-run, they're managed properly. Off-licenses take businesses away from the pubs because they sell their alcohol very cheaply and people can get loaded up before they go in the pub. So they actually do damage to the night-time economy. And if you can find a reason for preventing this one going through, that'd be wonderful. But basically, what we need is a cumulative impact policy putting into place. And I've got the document from the Home Office which tells you exactly how to do it. And it simply says at the beginning, "What is the cumulative impact policy?" They were introduced as a tool for licensing authorities to limit the growth of licensed premises in a problem area. Why don't we have one for West Street? Thank you, Chair, thank you for the opportunity for speaking.
Okay, thank you. Mr Sefton, I'm now going to open to any questions that my colleagues may have or later on the applicant. So start with councillor Gilbert, any questions, councillor Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. To the applicant, good morning. Could you tell me a bit of your...
Sorry, no, the question can only be to the...
I'm so sorry, I'm jumping ahead, sorry. Thank you for your objection, you know, it's a well-researched piece. I would like to have that document, please, I'll come around and get it, thank you.
Do you have any more, any questions, councillor Gilbert?
Obviously, as you say, we've already got multiple off-licenses on West Street. And could you explain to me how having an additional one will add to the problem?
There'll be a lot of competition between them. That's inevitable, isn't it? Because they're all trying to vie for a market that's available, people wandering up and down West Street. So the competition will lead to lower prices, the lower prices will then do even more harm to the existing 12 pubs on West Street. So it's not really in the interests of the night-time economy to add another off-licence, so that's one reason. Another reason is that people go between them to find out where they can get the best bargain in order to get the cheapest alcohol they can find. And they tend to congregate outside and talk to each other and that causes problems for people who live above these properties. As people do, of course, there's quite a lot of people living along West Street at the moment, well, have been for a few years, actually. So there are a number of reasons why the addition of one more off-licence is gonna cause addition to the problem of antisocial behaviour.
Thank you.
Sorry, just to jump in, the document you've just handed, would it be possible for the applicants to have a look at that as well? Obviously, Mr Clark, I appreciate you can't see the document, but I'm assuming it is purely the March 23 Home Office guidance, is that what it is?
It's Home Office guidance.
I've got it on here, thank you, yeah.
Okay, councillor McGowan?
Thank you, thank you. I was just trying to think back, I've been on council 14 years and I've been Chair of this committee and I was just trying to think back if I'd ever received anything asking about a community, I can't say it, but policy. And I can't remember hearing about it. I hear what you're saying and I think if it's not just about off-licenses or things, I think I have an issue with takeaways as well. If we're talking about healthy population, then, you know, so I think it's wider than just alcohol. My other, my question is about, you're pointing to the crime numbers and you're saying it's down to alcohol. I'm thinking, where's your evidence to say it's all down to alcohol? Because it could be drugs, it could be other things, not just alcohol, that's causing the issues and antisocial behaviour and the crime in that location. So I just wondered where you're getting your information from saying it's alcohol. I know that there's pubs and that in that area, but I also know there's an issue with drugs. Thank you.
Okay, if I can take the first question first. It doesn't get to councillors, it never has got to councillors over the time that I've been dealing with this and that we've been pressing for it. It doesn't get beyond the officers, it hasn't done for 10 years. And when I've raised this with officers in the past, not recently admittedly, probably last time I raised it would be 18 months ago, I should think. The answer was, the councillors representing licensing and the council generally represent the outside areas, they don't represent the city centre. And it's gonna be quite difficult to get this through because it'll be controversial. And we don't think really there is an opportunity to get a cumulative impact policy into Sheffield. And I'm summarising a discussion when I say that. So it doesn't get to the councillors and this is the first time that we have eventually decided, how long do we have to go on? You know, are we gonna have seven off-licenses, are we gonna have 10 off-licenses on West Street because you have very little power to control them? So it never got beyond officer level. Well, now it is because I'm here to tell you about it. And the second question is, well, that's empirical evidence coming from the police. Yes, you're right, there are drug issues and some of those will be daytime problems and they will be down to issues with drugs and alcohol because the addictions of both, aren't they, as you know? So it is true that we can't specifically say, but the view, talking to the officers around the city centre is, there is an issue with cheap alcohol available from places where they can get cheap alcohol, which tends to be the off-licenses. Okay, thank you. Councillor Johnson just made a point on the bottom of page 37 relevant to the question, councillor McGowan, that you just asked. And this is coming from the police at the bottom of page 37. Our police licensing teams, I understand, have asked for an earlier closing time and not 24 hours. We currently have several 24-hour off-licenses on West Street. It's currently a hotspot for ASB and MSV, most serious violence, which is why we've asked for the earlier closure. So, you know, that does back up, doesn't it, what I've just said to you, that comes directly from the police?
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna ask the legal advisor if she has any questions before I go on to the applicant.
Thank you, Chair. Obviously, we know you're a resident in the city centre and you represent a number of residents in the city centre. What sort of issues are being reported, sort of in terms of West Street to you or ones that you experience yourself?
Where do I start? Well, let's just take the most recent, which has been Bijou, Bijou, that's at the end of West Street. And they've been playing exceptionally loud music, they're right underneath the West One apartment building and they've been playing exceptionally loud music from, it used to be Barclays Bank. And the top floor of Barclays Bank was just like a greenhouse, in effect, there's no insulation, no double sound, double glazing or anything like that. And they don't have a licence to play loud music on that top floor, but they keep ignoring it. And we've had to involve licensing, public nuisance people from the council and the police to try and persuade them to stop doing that until the early hours of the morning. Then we've got the issue around Tesco with the drug, alcohol addicted people. And we've got the problems of the shops along West Street where the proprietors of those shops find that their windows have been kicked in at various times. And the cost of having those replaced. There's just continuing problems and I talked to the shopkeepers and I talked to the people running the pubs and the residents, obviously. And there are quite a lot of problems. But we live with it and councillor once said to me, "Well, if you choose to live in the city centre, what can you expect?" And the answer is, we do expect it, but we don't want to encourage it and we don't want to exacerbate it by having more off-licenses based on the street, which has got enough, basically. So yes, we accept it, we know there's antisocial behaviour in the city centre and we cope with it and we report it where necessary. And where there's noise coming from a location like Bijou, we deal with it and the council are always very cooperative and the police are very cooperative. But these people still break the rules, you know, the designated premises supervisor, when you go and say to them, "Look, you're not supposed to be making that noise from up there, that's not on your licence." "Oh, I'm not bothered about the licence, I've just got the place to run." In other words, the training for these people by the people that have got the head licence is very limited. And they really don't know how to control the buildings that they're operating in, they're just the designated premises supervisor. So that's a short way, Samantha, of saying we have a lot of issues and we deal with them. Because that's what we're there for, to represent the residents. I mean, I've just add one point to that, there's a doctor who lives in West One, above this restaurant-stroke pub, Bijou, who says, "I'm going to work in the morning, having hardly any sleep overnight and I'm having to deal with my patients when I've had that disturbance all night." Now, this is the challenge we have of bringing 30,000 people in, some of whom will be professional like the doctor and some of whom want to run the night-time economy, we have to get that balance, it's very important.
Thank you. You said with the increase in number of off-licenses or premises selling alcohol for off-sales, like your Tesco and your Premier, that it's leading to problems with competitions, they're trying to undercut each other with prices. In terms of the licensing objectives, what problems is having a number of off-licenses or premises selling alcohol for off-sales in the locality having? So whether than just they're trying to undercut each other, in terms of the licensing objectives, what impact is that actually having?
Well, just to make a point about what you said there, Tesco isn't competing with the individual privately-run outlets. Tesco has its price range and Tesco sells them at a price range. It's the smaller outlets, the ones like, well, 206 West Street would be one of the smaller outlets. But the one opposite, the Westbeat Off Licence and Bargain Boos, you know, they're competing all the time to try and make sure that they attract the customers into their building and do it with the best price. As far as the Licensing Act is concerned, I'm not really here to argue about this specific off-licensing, although I do think that the age of the, we think that the age of the designated premises supervisor is too young to run a place, an operation like this in a place like this. I'm here to draw attention to the councillors and hopefully the council officers, the ones present, by the way, who are not the ones that I was referring to before, to try and draw everybody's attention to the fact that something needs to be done to control the amount of off-licensed alcohol available on Westbeat. So whether the reasons for our objection are listed on the front page of our document and whether you feel any of those are suitable for an objection, that's your decision, obviously, as councillors. But our primary reason for being here today is to say that we've been doing this now for 10 years, it hasn't got to you previously, by the sound of it. We'd like the council to consider whether a cumulative impact policy is necessary for West Street. That means you may have to pass this one through and we have four, plus all the other outlets that are available. Or it may be that you say, "Well, we'll put this just on hold for the moment while we consider whether a cumulative impact policy is necessary." But that's clearly a decision for the council advised by the officers.
I appreciate what you're saying, obviously the SIP is a completely separate issue from this premises, but, so there's, other than the age of the DPS, the primary issue is it's another licensed premises that's not wanted in the city centre, rather than there are specific problems with off-licenses in the city centre leading to X, Y and Z.
Yeah, I agree with that and you're back to the weakness of the four licensing objectives, aren't you? I mean, those were dreadful, that was dreadful legislation that was brought in, I can't remember the year of it. But how can you argue against or argue in favour of these issues? The prevention of crime and disorder, well, there's enough of it already, so it's impossible to say whether it'll go up or go down as a result of one more off-licenses, one more off-licence. Public safety, well, clearly there's a problem with public safety in that part of the city. But we can't say and prove whether this will get worse or change at all as a result of this one off-licence opening. The prevention of public nuisance, well, it's likely it will get a little bit worse, but again, we can't prove it. And the protection of children from harm, again, we can't prove that either, other than the fact... Other than the fact that the person as the DPS is very young and not much older than my granddaughter. The point is that the Home Office guidance said that cumulative impact policy will give greater weight to the views of local people as the licensing authority will not be constrained by the requirement to provide detailed additional evidence where such evidence is unavailable. The four licensing conditions cannot, we cannot provide the evidence that demonstrates that this will meet any of those four. That's why cumulative impact policies were brought in and it actually says it in the Home Office document, to provide detailed additional evidence where no such evidence is available. The licensing regulations are really weak, but cumulative impact policies were brought in to stiffen them up. That was the whole purpose. And you're quite right councillor McGowan, it could be applied to other kinds of premises, betting shops, for example. You know, the council could apply it to betting shops, it might need it out, I don't know, it might need it at Walkley or wherever. Where there's a concentration of betting shops, you could apply a cumulative impact policies. And quite a few towns and cities do that, but we're just talking about West Street.
So no issues with off licences on West Street that you're aware of?
No.
Okay, thank you for that. Just before I ask the applicant if they have any questions, just a couple of points I want to make here. Mrs Sefton, you've made a very valid point about the cumulative impact policies and the fact that we haven't got one in Sheffield yet. Having said that, it's a very valid point, it's very significant in the wider context. But as far as this application goes, we can only consider it under the current policy that we have at the moment. So how relevant it is to this application is obviously questionable. Secondly, you've made reference several times to the age of the young man. He's obviously over the legal age to be in the position that he's in. So whether or not he's thirty or eighteen or twenty five, again, that's hardly relevant for this application. We see him today as he is in his role for that particular premise as a business. Just going on then, I'm going to ask the applicant if they have any questions of Mr Sefton, Mr Clark or the DPS.
Thank you, Chair. Just one question, please. Is he aware that, you made reference earlier in the conversation about other councils in West Yorkshire that have CIS policies in place? Is he aware that Nottingham Council, Further Field Leicester Council, Birmingham and Liverpool have all removed their CIS policy recently in twenty twenty one?
Yes, I am aware of that, but there are specific reasons why some of those councils reduce their, remove their policies. And it's interesting that in our area, Rotherham, Barnsley and Doncaster all have cumulative impact policies already in place and have done for quite some time and have not removed them.
Yeah. Okay, just that you said Nottingham have a CIS policy, sorry, you said Nottingham have a CIS policy, but that's actually incorrect. They've removed their CIS policy, so just wanted to check that you're aware of that.
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay, thank you. No more questions for now, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Right, moving on to the next interest party, councillor Douglas Johnson, the local representative of the ward.
Okay, thanks, Chair, thanks. So just, yeah, so first of all, just speaking for all three councils in City Ward. And the reason for that is because, because we know the, because actually we do get lots of casework and a lot of the casework from residents, from businesses and frankly also from people who don't live in the city centre but contact us as ward councillors because of nuisances coming from the area is because of essentially the tension between having a good quality of life and being able to have a thriving set of businesses, which of course is the issue that you're having to deal with in licensing, as it is in planning and so on. But, yeah, just saying, I mean, we get a lot of casework around this. And a lot of the casework is around, so, noise, nuisance. The people who live in some of the blocks of flats there, sort of waking up regularly and coming out and finding people have defecated and peed in the lobbies to their blocks. You've got noise at night and of course you've got, you know, all the policing operation which revolves around, you know, a lot of, not a lot of violence, but a certain degree of violence and it's something that, you know, the police have to put a lot of effort into. If you've been down West Street at night time, you know, really in time from early evening, then, you know, you'll see for yourselves. But also early in the morning, when a lot of people find it can be quite an intimidating place. So this is about, you know, whether it's about, you know, people going to work early in the morning. And that's relevant because one of our focuses is about sort of early morning hours and early morning drinking. So we've got that. We obviously talked to residents and businesses, we also talked to the police, community drugs team, community alcohol team, you know, a huge number of people in the voluntary sector. And, you know, no one really believes just how many people are engaged in kind of mopping up the issues and looking after people. And in so many ways, it's a good system. We also talk to people in the licensed trade, so, you know, the people who run pubs there are all pretty responsible. And, yeah, they are affected by people buying and consuming alcohol in a sort of non-controlled environment. So that's why we're largely in this objection. Completely endorse everything that Mr Sefton said about the, it's the cumulative impact of this cumulative effect. So, you know, the fact is actually West Street is a very, very concentrated area. I mean, this one's on the corner of Mappin Street, it's a massively important student area, close to Devonshire Green. And all down that stretch, you've got, you know, an economy that, you know, is largely driven on, you know, alcohol related stuff. I think you can take it from that, I know you asked the question before, but, you know, the link between alcohol and violence, the link between alcohol and antisocial behaviour, I think is so self-evident, you know, unless anyone's sort of never been to a town centre in Britain before. But, you know, and I think that's where we are there, we've got the privilege of being councillor in that area. So completely support what Mr Sefton says about cumulative impact assessments. It's something that this council has rejected in the past. I mean, it's something that I think we have all voted on, meaningful council, the two bigger parties have rejected that. It's certainly come to the licensing committee, which, you know, may not have been on there, but it has been rejected. But this area of West Street, Division Street, Goonshire Street round there has proved to be identified as an area of stress in terms of alcohol consumption as opposed to sort of takeaways and betting shops, which are a different proposition and different in different areas. But this area is characterised by a lot of off licences. So endorse all stuff about the cumulative impact assessment, but obviously accept that that is not currently Sheffield City Council's policy. So it's not safe to count off. Well, of course, you have the licence objectives clearly, but also the fact that the council's recognised, you know, a lot of the problems with alcohol because of the action on adopting the Public Space Protection Order. So the PSPO has recently been adopted by the council. It's based, it's entirely premised on the fact that there is a lot of alcohol related antisocial behaviour in the city centre. There is street drinking, all the stuff associated with that to such an extent that the council thought that it's necessary to bring in this PSPO. And again, you know, you're looking at the homeless guidance, you have to be absolutely clear that it's a serious step, although it's done in many parts of the country. It's a serious step because it criminalises behaviour that is not otherwise criminal. And the council has made the decision that it's brought in as a last resort. And I think this application day is the first one that you've got to deal with since the PSPO has come into force. And there is a question for you about how much can you take of that when you're looking at the licensing objectives? And because, you know, basically, there is necessarily a degree of the extent to which all the licences on West Street contribute towards the problems that have been complained about at the basis of the PSPO. And having yet another off licence, you know, whoever runs it, it's not a personal thing, having another off licence there of this type is going to add to that. So probably need to decide how that fits with the recent decision to go to the PSPO. Obviously, the main three licensing objectives are around antisocial behaviour, public safety and crime and disorder. So those are all really relevant things there. In terms of time, so the main thing actually with these is about the times of operation. So obviously the applicant wanted a twenty four hour licence, so they're completely unconstrained by any alcohol sales. We usually argue, as ward councillors, we usually argue that in city centre, the places shouldn't be selling alcohol before eight AM. And the reason for that is because, you know, we're in touch with the organisations that deal with people who are chronic street drinkers. And the reality is that if you're sleeping rough in the city centre, you're going to be up early, you know, four, five o'clock in the morning, quite easily six o'clock. By that time, you know, if you can get alcohol, you're a chronic alcoholic, you're going to be looking for alcohol. So those shops that will sell you alcohol at five or six or seven o'clock in the morning will do so. You can buy that, you know, you've had enough sleep on a stall in the city centre to sleep off you, you're not drunk, there's no reason for the off licence to refuse you. But it's that early morning drinking which shows its effects later in the day. And that's why, you know, when you talk to people that, you know, you know about this stuff at the Arch Project, Ben's Centre or whatever, or, you know, the street pastors, it's the people who've been started drinking very early in the morning who are much more likely to get into serious violence later in the afternoon. And that's why there's a big difference between selling alcohol at four, five, six in the morning and at eight AM. Realistically, council, the ward councils don't object to off licence selling alcohol from eight AM onwards. So that's something suggested there. And then the question is about how, what should be the cut off time at the end of the day? And you've already had a look at the bit at the bottom of page thirty seven and going on to page thirty eight because it's a comment from the police on the hours there. I mean, actually what they're suggesting is, is two AM is the right sort of cut off point. So if you look at the top of page thirty eight, what they say is, recent rents on Division Street applied for a twenty four hour licence, which is rejected on the same grounds, not surprisingly, and with their closure, it should be the same as the bars opposite at two AM. So if you think about it from a police point of view, the police have a lot of work on their hands in those early hours of the morning from, you know, from midnight onwards right through to dawn, dealing with people who've been doing some serious drinking there. It's not helpful to the police or anyone else to be for an off licence to be open and available to sell alcohol after the clubs have closed. So two AM gives, you know, the police a bit of a buffer there. And then also, if you think about it, given that another off licence recently on Division Street has had, two AM is the cut off point, it seems a basic precedent and seems at least fair. There's no good reason for giving one off licence a competitive advantage over another when it's, you know, a licence condition. So I'd probably use the two AM that's described there as a yardstick if it comes down to a question of hours. So that's, those are the main points that I'd ask you to take into account. With the stuff, and it's already been noted, so it's nice to see that Stacey is here today, so it's good to see him here. There is an issue that, and it's not an issue of age, I think, you're wrong in saying it's not age. We know you're eighteen, that's fine, nothing wrong with being eighteen. There is a question about the degree of experience, but that's something you want to take into account. It's probably only fair though that we hear from Stacey and Tony Clark before doing that. So if it's okay, I'd probably just go and ask some questions depending on how they want to present that aspect of it. That's it really, so if you have to take any questions on that.
Thank you councillor Johnson. Okay, again, open to questions, starting with my colleagues on the rightest time, councillor McGowan.
Thank you. Can I just ask for some clarification first about the hours agreed by the police? Is it two? Because my understanding was it was four, so have the police come in? Can we just clarify what's been agreed?
Police licensing team and then an officer from the city centre.
Right.
Sort of team that policed the main issues in the city centre, so the main hub of licensing within the police said eight till four.
Right.
I think it was PC Briggs, eight till five initially and then knocked back to four. But it was PC Briggs who heads up the almost community policing team within the city centre that had said eight while two.
Okay, thank you, that clears that up.
Sorry, can I interject there, please? That's actually not correct. I'll tell you that the basic story was that we agreed by pre-consultation with licensing, with Lucy Adams. There was an agreement made to change the hours from eight till five every day. And then during that consultation period, PC Briggs wasn't aware of this agreement. He then put the representation in and was asked, that's why the two o'clock was muted, because he was discussing previous applications that were made. And there was a, there was a lack of clarity between the two parts of the police department, if you like. And that was when I then had a conversation with PC Briggs. At that point, he said, look, I'm happy with, if that's been agreed to Lucy Adams. You know, that was all clarified that eight till five would have been acceptable. However, we had a long conversation, obviously a lot of these issues have just been discussed. But the, in a nutshell, it was then agreed by the end of the conversation that we would reduce back to four o'clock. So that was the final agreement that was made with PC Briggs. The two o'clock was only ever mentioned once in an email because he wasn't aware of the previous agreement that was made with Lucy Adams.
Thank you, thanks for that clarification, that helps.
Yeah, I mean, as I was saying, the records there are page thirty eight, thirty seven, thirty eight. So what Tony Clark is essentially saying is that, I mean, that's correct, but it's just to make the point that the agreement to four AM is simply the agreement that the police would withdraw their formal objection to this licensing. That's absolutely fine. I guess you couldn't really grant something for more than four AM. But still, the arguments made for saying two AM would be considerably better. And obviously you've got the informal advice there because it's on page thirty eight from Paul Briggs suggesting two AM for just the reasons I mentioned, you know, about consistent with the other off licences and the obvious benefits of policing in the area. It doesn't particularly help policing to have legitimate sales of alcohol off licence up to four AM in the morning. PC Briggs is involved with, is part of the central police licensing team now, but he's had many years of experience of being on the frontline in the city centre, so, you know, he does know his stuff there.
Thank you, sorry, I'm chair. Thanks for that. Whilst we're on that then, and you've brought in the PSPO and you're, and the police have been pushing for the PSPO. It sounded like you were in favour of it a minute ago and talking about criminalising behaviour. All the briefings we have is that is not the way it's going, it's about moving people on, it's talking, it's pointing to people to the services out there and helping people in the first instance, so it's not about criminalising behaviour. But it will tackle some of the issues you've raised, which is about shop doorways, urinating, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to address that and it's not just because of West Street, it's because of all of city centre. So I think, and so we will, I think that will help. I wanted to come on to, going back to the, what's it called? The CIP, that's the easier way for me to talk about it, the CIP. And we all know as councillors, you don't have to go through offices usually, councillors get bombarded with issues, with emails from residents, even if it's not in their ward, so, you know. And your own councillors, I'm surprised at what Douglas has said because we have a committee where we talk about policy and I don't remember it ever coming there and I don't remember you pushing for it either when we were on licensing together. So I just wanted to address that because you're making it as if it's been a big conversation and that hasn't been the case. and that hasn't been the case. And we've turned it down, so I just wanted to clarify that.
So, so two things there, so what, what, one is the, yeah, the, the PSPO. I mean, the very nature of PSPO is that it makes activity that's not criminal into criminal offences in certain designated areas. That's what the, the council voted for. It is about that, although there's lots of talk about support, but actually there is no increase in support available. There's, there's lots of, there is lots of support available currently, but there's no increase as a result of the PSPO. It is about criminalising, it's meant to be, it's sort of the sledgehammer to crack or not, really. And, you know, that's why none of the agencies who were actually involved in, and with that real expert knowledge of, of dealing with, you know, street co-ops in the city centre, that's why none of them supported it, really. It's clear that something needs doing, but actually, you have to ask the question, does it make sense to be trying to criminalise people who, you know, have got a lot of brain injuries, for instance, a lot of chronic mental health and substance misuse problems? Does it help to try and criminalise them? Or actually, is it this council that's causing the problem by, say, continually granting licences where it results in continual sales of alcohol throughout the day? And, and that's, that's the, the question you've got to ask yourselves at the end of this session. On the cumulative impact policy, sorry, what was the question again, Cam?
I think we've, I think we've battered the sip enough for this hearing, I'd, I'd rather, and just to clarify, the PSPO is not yet coming to force, it's the sixth of April for it to come in. So we're, we're looking at the position as it stands as, as of today.
I was just going to add that we need to try and concentrate the discussion on this particular case and not wider council issues, which this is all linked to, but obviously we're here to determine this particular application. So if we can keep the discussion to, to within this, the remit of that, that would be much appreciated, thank you.
Yes, I was going to say that, Jane, that we've said earlier on that it's a valid point, but it's significant in a wider context. As far as this application goes this morning, it's not relevant to even discuss the cumulative impact policy because we can only consider any application that comes to us under the current policy that we have in, in force. This is not a policy committee, this is a subcommittee, and that discussion needs to be had at the policy committee. I'm not, I'm not, you know, sort of undermining that, the argument, I'm saying it's not the right place to have the argument. So can we, as, you know, both my officers have said, can you please not keep referring to that policy because it doesn't make any difference? It's not relevant to today's application, thank you.
So just to clarify, what you might have misunderstood or misheard what I said, I actually said before that I supported the, what's been said about the cumulative impact policy, but accepted that he's not part of our licensing policy. So, but the point is, you do have to take account of the licensing objectives. And whilst we clearly don't have a cumulative impact policy in place, the council has made a decision to introduce a PSPO and that this proposed off licence falls within the boundary of the PSPO. So it's not really something that you can ignore.
Certainly, my advice to members would be that the PSPO is relevant to an extent, but what we're looking at is the cumulative impact of licensed premises that are negatively impacting upon the licensing objectives and whether this particular premises will undermine the licensing objectives based on the evidence before the committee today. So that's, that's your remit. So we can look at cumulative impact in the sense that a number of these licensed premises of a similar nature are causing problems, but not, there are a lot of premises we don't want anymore because that's not for you. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Any more questions, councillor McGowan? Okay, some other, any questions from councillor Johnson?
Just a couple, sorry, you said the other premises that was brought in line with the 2am closing, do you know which it was?
I don't actually, it just says they're on Division Street and I'm just trying to think, sort of ahead of which those were. So I, I don't know, sorry.
I'm not familiar with one that's come to committee. And I think I've done pretty much every, every one of these for a very long time now and I can't quite remember it.
I'm assuming this one didn't come to committee because in that case, because it talks about the closure being, the times being agreed, so I assume that they were a bit more compromising. And, and of course, if this case had happened, agreed to 2am, then probably would be all right with that.
That, that was going to be my next question.
Probably wouldn't have come to this contested hearing.
Okay. Oh, yeah, so I was kind of going to lead into that in terms of the, the main time of issues that are experienced in terms of the ASB, the crime, the nuisance. What, what sort of is your awareness of that from residents and businesses and other agencies?
So if you're out in West Street on those busy nights, I mean, obviously pubs and clubs are really busy, you can get to midnight too, there's a lot of people out there, it's pretty noisy, it's a weekend, there's a lot going on, you know, something seems a bit chaotic, but there's quite a big presence. And once you start getting into the earlier hours, then obviously you've got the point when, you know, the, the clubs close and you've got people coming out and that's where the, the police have to focus quite intensely. But it's that bit after that where you've got, where everyone thins out on the streets, where you've got most people have gone over in taxis or somewhere, and you've got, you've always got a few people struggling about. And this is where, you know, about the time when things like, you know, the street pastors, the Safe Square arrangements are packing up, but that bit, you know, really the sort of 3am on to dawn, really, if you've got people who are still hanging about in the city centre, that's the kind of danger time, really, because you've, you've got few people, you've got people who, if they're there, they're necessarily going to be really tanked up, you know, probably fairly incapacitated. That is when you get those, you know, serious incidents going off. Whenever you hear about, you know, a serious incident such that, say, West Close Street's been closed off by the police and trams aren't running, it's because something that's happened at like 3am or so, stabbing at 4.30, you know, glassing, something like that, or even someone who's just collapsed, you know, through, you know, excessive alcohol. It, it tends to be that sort of time. And you're in then to the, the time when it overlaps with people who, as I said, might have been sleeping rough in the city centre or up early, and then you get interaction with people there. You know, so that, that's the danger time. So all I'm saying is, that's not the time to be having, you know, to allowing fresh sales of alcohol from off licences. If you're that tanked up that you can still go to the shop and buy an extra bottle of vodka at 3am, you know, nothing's good going to come out of that, to put it that way.
Yeah, that's helpful, thank you.
Can I just come in and say, we as residents would support the suggestion of 2am, eight, eight, 8am to 2am, we would support that for all the reasons that councillor Johnson has explained. Thank you, making up to that, thank you.
I was going to ask you next, thank you.
Okay, any more questions from this side? Oh, sorry, I've not allowed you, yeah, sorry.
Councillor Johnson, could you give us any recent examples you've had of casework related specifically to off licences? So I don't mean, oh, that pub or that nightclub, just the specific casework you may have encountered to do with off licences.
So I think this about off licences is, it, it's continuous. So we have some casework which is down to specific off licences, there's one further up, actually up on Cross Road where there were, you know, a lot of problems around that. A licence granted, you know, under fairly contested conditions, but straight away, as soon as granted, the shopkeepers started abusing those conditions fairly overtly, really, pretty abusive to some of the people who'd objected, banned them from the shop, but actually, and that business, you know, failed fairly soon, you know, but, you know, not without causing quite a lot of nuisance. There's a certain amount of nuisance from all the sort of bins of rubbish round off licences. But the, the biggest difficulty is that because there's a number of off licences, there are a certain amount of people who sort of bounce between the two. And it's not that, you know, and this is difficult, we've got, I mean, it's all relevant to cumulative impacts of policy, but we've parked that. But it means that every time there's an additional off licence, it does have that impact of just sort of increasing the likelihood of, you know, more nuisance arising from it. So that's it. It's, it's slightly different from the issues where there are more specific issues to do with off licences. I mean, other ones further down the street, we've had where there was all sorts of stuff around counterfeit goods and modern slavery, again, after a, after a fairly contested licensing hearing. But there's a lot that, of course, you know, we don't know about at the time and, and the approach to this is about the likelihood of, you know, danger and public harm that can be predicted fairly reliably at this stage, obviously before it opens, I mean, without regard to the personalities involved.
Thank you.
Can I, Chair, may I just add to that, that most of the people that work behind the counter in the off licences are quite young people, some of them are students in Sheffield, and it's very hard for them to say no to somebody who comes in in an, in an inebriated condition in the middle of the night, as councillor Johnson's just explained. It's very hard for them to say no to somebody and, no, I can't serve you. They are young people, it's potentially quite dangerous, most of them are now behind glass because that's for that reason. But it is really difficult for them to say that because the people that councillor Johnson has just been talking about can then put their foot through the window, or try and put their foot through the window. So, you know, these problems do exist and exist quite a lot. Thank you, Mrs. Sheffington. Okay, so again, I'm now going to offer the opportunity to the applicant or the advocate to ask any questions of Mr., of councillor Johnson. Mr. Clark, any questions?
I think, I think everything's been answered by yourselves that I would like to ask, so I'm happy with, with everything so far. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And in that case, then it's over to yourselves to, to detail your application.
Okay, good morning, Chair, councillors and everybody else today. My name's Tony Clark and I'm the licensing consultant, acting as the agent for the applicant, Mr. Halschaw Fadil. My client's a British passport holder, he's been living in the UK since 2000. He was, is now British citizen since 2019 and he's been working in convenience stores for the last five years. Mr. Fadil currently owns and manages two other shops in the Sheffield area and he'll be working part-time in the shop with three other members of staff, obviously alternating hours, including Mr. Azat, who is the nominated DPS. Mr. Azat also is the nominated DPS of another shop in the Sheffield area and, and both the DPS and the, and the applicant have never experienced any issues with the police. They're well managed and well-run shops and, and I've visited both shops, obviously doing the training, the compliance issues, and there's been no problems that any of them have reported to me or any that the police, that we, I had a very long conversation with the police and there's been, certainly been no issues with the applicant themselves, applicants over DPS. In regards to the plans you'll see submitted by yourselves with this application, the shop is quite small and the space is limited. And the shop will be selling a range of groceries, very small selection of fresh baked products, plus of course, the normal general household items. And if this application is successful today, alcohol, which will all be stored behind the Perspex glass screen. Crucially, this means that the customers will not be able to handle any of the alcohol unless it is being purchased at the shop. Prior to the application being made, as I discussed briefly earlier, I consulted with Lucy Adams, who works for the police licensing section, this would be the normal process to try and consult as quickly as possible with the police. And we managed to reach an agreement, as you're aware, with the additional condition of the door staff. And that time was agreed to be a terminal hour of five o'clock every morning, every day. During the application, as I mentioned, the PC Paul Briggs, he's the hotspot response hub, problem-solving officer, S U F C operational football officer, so obviously a lot of experience and he would be the go-to person. He also made a representation, not realising that Lucy had previously made a representation. So obviously, it was just a misunderstanding and that's why he muted the hours of two o'clock. I never actually found out which, which shop he was referring to. Certainly on Division Street, I don't know of any, any other off licence on that street that has been granted at two o'clock terminal hour. The only one I know of on that street is got 24-hour licence, it's Sainsbury's. So anyway, by the end of the conversation, we discussed the, the applicant, the DPS, the, the conditions themselves in the licence, which are obviously paramount to this application. Sort of, the main conditions that we were looking for was obviously no single cans of ciders or beers, over 7.5% would be sold from the premises at any time, a minimum of four cans would be sold. And then obviously, all the alcohol, beers, ciders, lagers, mixer pops, wine spirits, everything's behind the counters. The, there are, there's been reference made by the councillor in relation to street drinkers, obviously you discussed it and this information's not included, but I'd just like to point on that, that the, there are two refusals policies that will be in place, there's certainly the notices will be in place, but the policy will be in place throughout and it's a condition of the licence that states that refusals include clear warnings that street drinkers will not, or will be refused the sale of alcohol. The designated premises supervisor must be a member of License Watch and maintain annual membership. Obviously, in regards to children, the safety of children, proxy signs will be on display, as, as will another condition which states that all employees must be vigilant to monitor the area outside the shop and to disperse groups of people, if in groups of three. And obviously, that would include looking for any potential children that may be around the outside of the shop, trying to buy alcohol through other people, through proxy sales. Obviously, we've got the challenge 25 policy. We've obviously, we've, we've also got the condition in ready for the PSPO when it becomes in place in April, and that's the notice of the current, any current Sheffield city centre PSPO must be displayed at the premises. And no, no further conditions were deemed necessary by the police. Obviously, the application fully supports the licensing objectives and that's, that was agreed with the police. We conducted a systematic and thorough risk assessment against the principles of the four licensing objectives, taking into consideration the significance of the following documents to help identify any potential areas of concern. Those included the Sheffield Council's SOLP 2021 to 2025, the revised guidance issued under section 182 of the Licensing Act, the Licensing Act 2003 and the four licensing objectives, the Portman Group Code of Practice on the Name, Packaging and Promotion of Alcohol and Drinks Exedition, Age Restrictive Products and Services Framework and the Equality Act 2010. We've obviously focused on relevant matters that, that are within the control of the licence holder and, and the vicinity of the premises itself. We're mindful of the statement made in Sheffield Council's SOLP, which states, any application received under the Licensing Act will be dealt with on its own individual merits and by reference to the four licensing objectives. We will take care to ensure necessary proportionate and reasonable conditions are imposed on regulated activities. We believe obviously after consultation that as the relevant authorities have not objected, they also believe that the application is a good application. This obviously includes the environmental health team, who would normally be considered experts in dealing with public nuisance. Obviously, we've got other conditions which relate to the CCTV. We have a full set of compliance books, including CCTV logbook, incident log, a refusals book, staff training induction, induction logbook, and an age verification logbook, the posters and notices that we will obviously instruct our clients to, to display, include an S57 notice, proxy notices, as we said, refusals policies and challenge 25, quiet notices and age verification policies and schemes. All the books that we use, we've used them in conjunction with hundreds of licensed premises around the country since 2007, 2008, when we first introduced them. They are fit for purpose and obviously hundreds have been using them across England and Wales since that time. They are the tools that assist the premises licence holders to support the conditions effectively. And obviously, going on to the representations, the two main themes of the text of the representation relates to need and the implementation of assists, and the second issue relates to potential for public nuisance. As, as you've mentioned, need is a decision that can only be made by the planning authority based on a commercial demand, and need is not an area for the licensing authority to consider. consider. And obviously the pan today have no jurisdiction on planning matters, there's no cumulative impact on the city, and if there was any special restrictions enforced in the future, then this would be a matter for something that would happen down the line. But as it's been mentioned today, there's no cumulative impact in the city centre. Obviously, the writers' concerns, we take them seriously, we understand them, they are personal beliefs and fear of an antisocial behaviour, so obviously whilst I sympathise, there's no evidence, this premises will add to the issues that they've raised so far. The shop hasn't even opened yet, so we can't be held responsible for any issues that might have happened in the past. The risk assessment carried out is appropriate, is appropriate regard to the location and the character of the nation, the extent of the proposed uses and the persons likely to be attracted. We concluded that in all probabilities, there would be little to no increase in footfall as customers are already in that area. It would be the same customers that visit the other shops, and it would not attract new people to the area. This shop is not a specialist shop, and obviously, everybody that lives in the area obviously understands that they live in the night-time economic area themselves, and that there wouldn't be any excess noise, that's all excessive to what's already existing. In my opinion, it's hard to believe that a small shop like this would create any further noise that's already present in immediate locality. Just to point out that the premise can open for business regardless of whether it has a licence or not, because obviously the timings have been agreed with the planning many years ago. In regards to the hours of the other shops that are relevant, close by, Bargain Beers across the road, across the junction, they have a 24-hour licence. Further down the road, Sheffield Convenience Store has a 24-hour licence, and they were granted since 2008. Bargain Beers has been open since December 22, and obviously you have Sainsbury's around the corner in Division Street, that has been granted their licence to 24 hours. So none of the, obviously there's review policies in place for any licence if it's causing an issue, but none of these licences have been revoked since that time. So obviously during this, this sort of pre-consultation period and looking through the issues in the area, there are crime issues, we've obviously chatted with the police about that, but we don't feel, and the police don't feel, that there would be any impact whatsoever added on to the additional issues that the local people and the councillors already face. We're not negating that, those issues that they say they, you know, that they're raising and they say that they see. However, we don't feel that this would create any new problems at all, and we believe that having agreed with the police, the hours that were requested, and now obviously we've agreed to four o'clock, we would humbly request that you grant these hours as requested, given that certainly the, you know, the police and the public health team and the environmental health team in their own, in their own brights are normally considered to be the experts in their field, and we think that if they will agree with us, as they have done, then there shouldn't be any reason to see that we shouldn't be granted these hours. And thank you very much for your time. Obviously, I'll take any questions if you want to ask them.
Okay, thank you, Mr Clark. Open to go to questions then. My colleagues first, councillor McGowan, any questions from Mr Clark?
It's not to Mr Clark, it's to the DPS, if that's okay. It was just, you're already working in an off-licence, is that correct? And is it in the city centre?
No, it's in Ecclesdale Road, if you're aware where that is. I've had it since, it's been operational since, effective since the 6th of November, so it's been about two months now. And we've had no issues, we've had no incidents reported, no problems with the police in that specific premises.
Okay, thank you. And has that got a 24-hour licence, or is it?
I believe that licence, if you don't mind.
Yeah, no, it's fine.
The licence is from 2:00 AM.
3:00 AM, thank you. And as you heard, there was this thought that young people find it hard to say that no to people that have, how would you deal with someone that came in that had had too much to drink?
Typically, if they've come in and had too much to drink and they're very obviously clearly under the influence and not capable, first you'd start by obviously assessing the situation, how they are, and then you just, sorry, request them to leave in the case that they just seem like you can't, they're not capable to be in the right circumstance to purchase another drink and obviously consume it. So we just, first you'd request them to leave, obviously. Further actions are required, obviously, in this premises, we have like the doors closing off the counter. So in the case that we'd need to, we'd have to obviously contact the relevant authorities in the case that it might come a serious situation.
Thank you. Just one final question was about, if the licence was granted and there was issues, how would the company work with the community on any issues raised to try and resolve the conflict or the issues? Will there be somebody, will there be a telephone number visible for residents if there was issues occurring?
Sorry, could you just?
Yeah, so what I'm trying to get at is if, if you got the, if the licence was granted and there was, issues did occur, and residents came in to see somebody, or if the shop was closed and they wanted to raise someone, would there be a telephone number for the community, any of the residents to ring and, and contact?
Yeah, if they want, if they need a place to contact, we can provide them with relevant information to contact, either myself or the house owner, obviously, to basically discuss these issues and what we can do to really like get down onto them issues and obviously sort it out with, like if someone upstairs in the flats is having an issue with people being too noisy downstairs, we can just request each, we can come to solutions, like requesting people to not behave more sensibly, but like lower their tones and have a bit more control around the areas and stuff like that, relevant things.
Okay, thank you, councillor McGowan. Councillor Gilbert?
Thank you, Chair. Could you give me an example in your experience of where you've dealt with a difficult incident in one of your premises?
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to stop this questioning because it's, we're questioning the ability of someone who's legally here in a DPS role, and it's not a job interview. And I'm not comfortable with these questions, questioning his ability, because I think we're going on speculation, and it's not fair, and I think he's old enough to be in that role, and, you know, to question his ability to carry his role based on just speculation, I don't think is right. So I'm going to have to stop those questions, those type of questions.
So would I be able to partially answer that question, if that helps the councillors? So when we, whenever we apply for a premises licence and the shop is going through a consultation period, we get to the end of that period, or if it's a normal licence and we get to the end of the consultation where it's granted, we always go through a systematic sort of process with the compliance manuals and books and training books for all the staff, regardless of whether the premises licence holder and DPS has already got any other shops, because there may be new staff and everybody needs to be trained on the specific premises with the specific set of conditions that have been agreed after consultation. So that would, that's something that we take upon ourselves as a responsibility as an agent. We would speak to and go through and direct them as to the processes that have to follow from that. So that, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you, Mr Clark. But as I said, I think it's, for me, it's going over the line a bit for this kind of detailed questions, and the ability of someone to carry out their role, being legally in that role, thanks. Any more questions from members?
No, thank you, Chair.
Sam?
Thank you. It's on a similar vein, so hopefully I'm within the remit. Do you see a DPS of three of the premises?
No, just one.
Just the one?
Yeah.
And that's Seven Hills, isn't it?
Yeah, that's correct.
Yeah. What about out of Sheffield?
Out of Sheffield, at the moment, I'm not a designated premises supervisor for any other premises at this current moment in time.
Okay. And any other business involvement? Really what I'm getting at is obviously if you're going to be the DPS of this premises, then you're the one ultimately with day-to-day control and responsibility. So obviously if there are a number of other businesses that you're either managing, director of, or involved in, it's just to get into that really.
Sorry, could you just like?
Sorry, yeah, just if there's any other businesses that you're involved in.
The only ones at the moment are the, obviously this one in Ecclesdale Road and one in Preston at the moment, but it's not something that I'm, I'm the current director of it, it's recently opened, but at the moment we've had our own staff there to fully control, making orders, controlling the shops, everything to do with, that is already being handled at the moment.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if it's you or a relation in Darnall, Stars? Was it on Bain Road?
That probably, that's not in relation to me, that might be my mum. It's a family, a family business, so.
When I say I've been doing this a while, I've been doing it a while, so it sticks in my brain a little bit, that's all. And we said that the proposed premises licence holder has got another two businesses in Sheffield, was that right?
Is that?
If Mr Clark can answer that one, sorry.
Yeah, sorry, I've not been able to speak to Mr Fadil this morning to confirm that. I just spoke to him briefly a couple of days ago and was asking him these questions, but I wasn't able to get down to the nuts and bolts of exactly where the shops were, but he told me he's involved in a couple of other shops. I was just asking about his experience at that time, to be honest with you, so I couldn't tell you exactly what the addresses are.
Yeah, no, that's fine, thank you. So how often are both sort of intended to be, to be on site?
From what Mr Fadil's told me, he'll be, he'll be working, obviously with his other shops, he'll be working part-time in this shop. At the beginning of the operation, when they first open, he'll be there predominantly just to make sure the setup is done and all the training's done for the staff, and then part-time overseeing the three shops together as far as I'm aware. So it'll just be part-time, but obviously depending on how the situation works with the staff, the other staff that are sort of put in place, then they'll work between them the, was it the 16 hours or, sorry, 20 hours a day. So maybe Stars could answer the question better, if it's six hours each or eight hours each. Stars, what would you, what would you be able to tell the committee?
I'd be able to say it'll depend on what times we can get certain staff in. So if we've got staff requesting certain hours, obviously, whatever hours can't be covered, we can step in, obviously, and cover them hours. Obviously, we'd request that if you're going to stay till, if you're going to tell us that you're going to come in and from like 10, but you want to stay till two, we'd obviously request that you stay till four, because you might as well stay till the closing time, or if that makes sense to you.
Yeah, that's good, thank you. So initially, it was a 24-hour licence applied for. What was the reasoning behind that? Mr Clark?
Oh, sorry, simply because I think it's a competition thing more than anything. Obviously, shops would like to, like to be the best business that they can, like to be as profitable as they can. I think there's no way of trying to sort of dress it up as any other thing that one does, it's just a commercial reason.
No, that's great, thank you. That's good for me. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of the questions from our side. Any questions from the interested parties? Mrs Sefton?
Thanks, Chair. Mr Clark, I'm just interested, you mentioned it's a small shop, it was a hairdressers, I think, before. You mentioned groceries. Well, the facade on the shop with the heading Liquor Local, the two Os in liquor and local, have a bottle in the centre of them, and the list of things that are for sale are spirit, wine, beer, vape, tobacco, no mention of groceries. So I was surprised if it's a small shop and groceries aren't listed in the, on the front, why you mention groceries as if it was a general store? Convenience store, I should probably say.
Yeah, it's a supply and demand issue. I mean, obviously, you put on your sign what you feel might be attracted to the people, the customers of your shop, but if somebody comes in, wants the breads, the sandwiches, the milk, the crisps, the, you know, the tins of tomato soup, then that's something you put on the shop, and it's like every other convenience store, I think, there's, you know, so it's only, this licence is for alcohol, it's not for other products. So I'm just pointing out that other products will be sold.
Okay, thank you. Is that it, Mrs Sefton? Okay, councillor Johnson?
Yeah, thanks. So there's two, sort of two main aspects, the hours and the DPS. So actually, Mr Clark, on the hours, I'm just checking where you were, I just want to ask, are you in a position to be agreeable to a 2:00 AM closure? I mean, I'm just asking because of where the conversation was going earlier on, that suggests that might be agreeable. Are you in a position to agree that?
Mr Fadil has specifically asked me for the four o'clock finish. And obviously, we're looking at a unique situation for this shop. It's not very often that we, that we specifically talk to the client at the beginning and say, look, you must put this perspex barrier up. So this is a very strong safety mechanism that's put in place from the beginning. None of the customers that come into the shop will be able to put their hands on any of the alcohol. This shop will be safe, and it will be safe from the moment it opens until the moment it closes every day. So for me, I don't think the difference between two or four o'clock will be, will impact the licensing objectives at all. You know, it's, what we're looking at is a situation where if you compare it to other shops that are open till four o'clock historically, that have been opened previously in Sheffield in this area, some of these other shops don't have those safety mechanisms. So that the issue with the licensing sort of act itself doesn't specify that we go back and look at those licences and re-implement other conditions unless there's any reviews been taken. So with no reviews being taken on the other premises, unfortunately, they, they're in a position where they can keep the shops open, or the shop doors open. So this is a conversation we had with the police during the consultation with PC Briggs, and he agreed that at the end of the day, wouldn't it be nice if we could get all the other shops to do what we're doing? So I don't see how, you know, we're not, we're not trying to penalise ourselves by offering this up at the beginning as a proposal, but we do feel like by, by offering it, it's making it extremely safe compared to other shops that are open in the area that don't have to, that don't have to put these security barriers up. So we feel that four o'clock would be reasonable.
It's very good to know that the staff will be protected with solid perspex screens, but just the fact of having your entire stock of the shop screened off in that way with an ultra security, does that not give an indication about the level of danger that you're inherently dealing with in this business?
Well, West Street Off licence across the road, it's at number 185 West Street, they've got a 24-hour licence and they have the same operation. They applied for the licence in December 22, and they've experienced no issues. I was speaking to PC Briggs about this, and he said that, you know, it's worked very well for them. So that's the bottom line, that, you know, you've got to go through these processes where you haven't got a sit zone, and you want to, you want to put forward a good proposition that will work, and obviously you have to take a pragmatic approach. You know, we're aware of the issues that surround alcohol and the dangers of alcohol, but effectively you have to find a way forward using the licence, or using the acts that we have. You know, it's, promoting the licensing objectives and making sure everything's safe is paramount to what we're doing. You know, it's, it's promoting the licensing objectives and making sure everything's safe is paramount to what we're doing. So at the end of the day, you have to look at the specific licence application in front of you and decide on balance whether, whether it's, whether, whether it's going to be safe. And, and that's the discussion we had with PC Briggs and the outcome of the discussion basically said that, you know, following on from what they did at West Street. It, it was a good proposition, it's worked and there's been no issues as a result of it. So at the end of the day, why, why try and, you know, change something if it's not broken? That, that was a good situation across the road, we've done that before and it does work. So whilst it might not be familiar to some people, it does protect everybody around in the area. And it's certainly for, you know, for the late night economy, it does work.
So many people would say that West Street is already broken around that point, certainly at that point of the night. So funny question on this point, Mr Clark, is what sort of trade are you particularly relying on between two and four in the morning?
Obviously I can't answer that question, I think that's impossible to answer what trade, I mean, it's just anybody that comes into the shop looking for what you sell.
That's kind of my point, all right, I think you've answered, that's where you can. Can I just ask about the licensee first of all, so Hal Shoffard deal? I don't know if you can tell me, is 18 Spital Hill one of his shops? Which people even knows the former East House on Spital Hill.
Sorry, could you repeat the question please?
Sorry, I was just, you, you said that Al Shoffard has got three shops, if you include this one. Are we, of the others, is 18 Spital Hill is his, isn't it?
I, I don't know, I, I actually don't know, I wasn't able to speak to him about this, I've not had a chance to talk to him about where his other shops are.
It, it's fine, if you don't know, then you don't know and he's not turned up today and I think Stas is indicating he doesn't know either. All right, can I ask, this, we've got some questions for Stas, so, I mean, thanks for coming today, it's helped. Just following up those, I think the, the real question is about the fact that we've heard that this is obviously quite an intense place. It's not your ordinary off licence, it's one that by Youngblokes' application has to be fenced off securely with both specs, you know, at the late night economy in the city centre. Big question is, how do you think you're going to manage your time managing that and also the issues with 283 Ecclesall Road?
With managing both of them at the moment, the current deal is at the moment with the licensing with the new shop, obviously in West Street. This is, obviously I am the DPS, I'm helping provide all the training for the staff and everything. But obviously I'm handling that situation with Hal Show. So I can usually split my days around, between three days here, three days there. I've got plenty of free time, I've got nothing else to put my, not nothing else to put my time into, but I can work around time managing where situations may occur. I can put my time and effort into that area.
Sorry, can I, can I just interject as well, there's, well, I've obviously, I've discussed something with Hal Show that I haven't mentioned so far. That the CCTV system that's been implemented is also on his phone as well. So they've got the, because it's, it's, this is a, this is something that we normally discuss when they've got more than one shop. Because I, I'm obviously aware of doing, you know, multiple shops for clients in the past. They, they have a system which is, allows them to see the CCTV through the mobile phone. So if they're not in one shop, you can keep one eye on the other shop at the same time, if that answers your question.
Thank you for that, just add to that, yeah, for the Ecclesall Road shop, I also have CCTV access to that and I do constantly monitor it to make sure everything's okay in that area.
Okay, thanks. And with the Ecclesall shop, so one of the things about the Ecclesall shop is, is that, and as I said, it's under still fairly intense monitoring from the police. I don't know if you can describe what contact you've had from the police there in relation to Ecclesall Road?
Sorry, could you just like?
Sorry, so 283 Ecclesall Road, and there's quite a lot of active monitoring by the police there. Do you want to tell us what that involves?
At the moment it's, I don't have any direct experience with the police because they've not requested anything of me, they've not attended my shop in the time that I've had it. I do believe I've spoken to the old owner, the only real time they've had contact with the police was obviously to access CCTV footage for incident that occurred across the road. I'm not entirely sure on the specifics of that. But around that area, it's typically, I've not had any issues myself. All my staff have told me that they've been fine, that I've checked CCTV, we've not had any particular issues of specific contacts with policing or anything. If we do, I'd provide my name and everything, all the details they'd request from me, obviously.
So, because on that one, I think you said that you've only had your name on that as DPS since, well, for a month, for it since November?
For two months now, it would be.
Two months then, okay. It's not a great deal of experience and the reason I was asking is because, I mean, we all know that that was one, a few shops actually had his licence revoked. After quite a big operation with Trading Standards with a lot of issues about counterfeit and smuggled goods and tobacco. There's, there's quite a history to it and I just wondered if you can tell us what you know about that.
I don't, I don't think we really need to go into that, I think you've not had any issues while you've been with the premises.
I've not had any issues and I've got no connections to the old owner at all, I'm not sure, I've just taken over from that place, we've not had any issues following that.
All right, okay. Part that one then, and then the other issue is just about, you've of course got two businesses there which have quite a lot of involvement. But one's already asked about your other businesses. Again, how are you going to spread your time with those and do you want to just run through what you've got?
At the moment it's only the three, it's two here and one in Preston. And at the moment I'm only needed to attend that one in Preston once a week, just to see how everything's going, obviously asking staff out, they are. At the moment there's no, we're not selling alcohol at that premises at this very moment. So there's no, it's a grocery store, it's an international food store, so we just sell food products there.
And, okay, so you've got that one in Preston, which again is near here. And then one mentioned that the one at Main Road in Darnall. Again, that's something where there's been a history of counterfeit and smuggled tobacco and what's your link with that?
For that, I, I've got no, that's, obviously it might involve my family. Because I'm, I know that my, it's under my mum's name at the moment, but I obviously don't involve myself in that business, I'm not aware. I've only recently started working two months in Ecclesall Road, I don't know anything beyond that. I was younger then, I was like in school at these times of these incidences, so I've got no relation to them. No clue to specify what type of situation they had, from now on I know they're clear, so, thank you.
I appreciate I'm putting you on the spot a bit, and you say, as you said quite rightly, you were at school when these incidents happened. But by these incidents, do you mean the convictions?
I, I'm not entirely, I'm not entirely sure that's a thing.
Mr Johnson, I'm not quite sure where you're going with this, we are only looking at a specific application for one on West Street. So if you can just keep your questions relevant please for this application.
Well, the reason for asking, and I'll just put this straight to Mr Rosehead, is that although he said it's family business and we talked about his, his family's convictions. Mr Rosehead hasn't got any convictions there at all. But am I right in saying that actually although you said it's your mum's business, you're now the sole director of that business?
Of which one, sorry?
This one, it's 170 Main Road, the Stas Properties Limited.
Oh, Stas Properties Limited, that, that has no relevance to any shops in that area. That's just past it down, that's for. I'm not sure how this has relevance to this licence in particular, but it's nothing related to shop, shops or anything, it's a completely separate type of business. I don't know if that's wanting to be answered or not, but I'd rather not.
It, it's fine, it, it's, so, so it's, I mean, we've talked about, you know, your family's issues and everything. And I think it's important that we don't hold against you the fact that maybe your own family's got convictions for counterfeit goods. Or that we hold your age against you, there's nothing wrong with being 18. The question is really about if you were to manage this property, this shop at West Street, whether you've got enough time to actually do that. Given that actually you have a lot of other demands on time. So you talked about Ecclesall Road and all the issues of that, there's the business in Preston that you have to go to, you're the sole director of that company, aren't you? You're a sole director of Stas Properties based at Main Road in Darnall with the history of that. Question is, how are you going to manage that time? And do you have any other property, any other businesses that you have to spend time on?
No, it's just then for, I don't really spend much time on the Stas Properties business. That is very relevant to, obviously these types of, what we're looking at.
I think you've already answered, I haven't explained your time really.
Yeah, exactly, that's what I mean, I don't know how to add to that really.
All right, okay. The Doncaster business that you're a ABC Polish supermarket, you're a sole director of?
I forgot about that one completely, that is my bad. Yeah, that's also, it's just similar to the Preston situation. I don't really, I do, obviously I'm the director of it and everything, I handle checking CCTV occasionally. And obviously if we need to do transfers to companies for, it's a grocery store, there's nothing to that. There's, it's a grocery store that sells international products in like a small shop, so. I've not needed, with the amount of staff they have already managing that shop, it's not something that I'm having to put aside all my time into. I can't focus on what might be more important if you understand where my point is coming from.
All right, okay. So I think the point there is that you've got a lot of demands on your time, and so you've got a licence there. But that's probably something that the panel can, you know, make a decision on. I was just wondering, Mr Clark, in fairness to you, I mean, were there any issues with any conditions on Mr Rosehead as DPS in view of his, you know, very small amount of experience so far and the other demands on his time in terms of bringing extra support for him?
Sorry, what's the question?
Sorry, would you have any objection to any conditions relating to support in some way for the DPS? I mean, given the, given Mr Rosehead's relative lack of experience and the extra demands on his time. There's obviously going to be a concern that this shop will not be the sole focus of either Mr Rosehead or Hal Show Fadil.
So I personally believe that the Stas as a DPS, he's, he's an intelligent lad, yes, he's young, but his family have been running shops for a long time. As far as I'm aware, he understands licensing very well. The training that we implement is effective, it's not onerous. It's, 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 it's well sort of honed, if you like, on the particular type of location. And the, the nature of the shop and the size of the shop and the position in the street. I don't particularly feel like it needs any more conditions added, however, obviously that, that would be something I would talk about in summary normally anyway. But since you've mentioned it, I would be happy to, to accept any conditions that the, the committee would like to see being imposed. But if there's anything that you're particularly thinking of right now, would you, would you care to mention it? Is there anything, is there anything particulars that you'd like to see right now or?
Sorry, but it's not for, for interested parties to start imposing conditions, that's for the panel.
I didn't think so, that's what, that's what I was trying to get to though, what is it he's actually trying to ask for? Because it, obviously I've worked with the committee quite happily, we've discussed other, other conditions. But we, we feel that, you know, we've discussed this with the responsible authorities, we've not been asked for any further conditions. They feel it's, it's appropriate and, and, and we, we think so as well, based on what we're looking at so far.
Yeah, it just, it helps, I mean, I've no specific condition in mind, but it's something that, you know, the panel might want to ask legal advisor about if it's, if it's helpful, that's all.
Well, of course, yeah, we would always, we would always welcome that if there's anything else that the committee wants to see.
Okay, thanks, that's all from me.
Okay, thank you for that everyone. Now the final stage is the summing up and I'm hoping that's going to be quite brief and concise because we had some very detailed discussions and questions and answers. So I'm going to again go back to councillor Johnson just to very briefly and concisely, you know, sum up your representation, councillor Johnson.
Okay, so in short, we think opening yet another off licence in this location on West Street will be detrimental to the area. And will increase the level of antisocial behaviour etcetera in the city centre. As you know, that accepts that there isn't cumulative impact policy, so it's hard to address that very effectively. But, but that's where we are. If it is, then probably the, the hours of the licence are most important to look at. It doesn't seem to be in dispute that the premises shouldn't open before 8am, so that's fairly good. Let's just go to the, the 2am as, as in line with what PC Briggs said with reference on page 38. And in view of the, you know, the general closure of other bars, clubs and other off licences there. And then, you know, you might want to think about what conditions might be appropriate just to make sure that the premises are adequately supervised in terms of the DPS. It's unusual, I think, for someone who's with this limited degree of experience coming into quite, you know, a full-on location. That's, that's it from me.
Thank you councillor Johnson, Mrs Sefton?
Just to repeat what I've said previously, Chair, and thank you for the committee to spend this much time considering it. I can privately tell councillors why we haven't got a cumulative impact policy. Because as I mentioned before, we've been looking at this for 10 years and I can tell you privately why I believe we haven't got one. We think the prevention of public nuisance is a reasonable justification for turning down this licence. We have enough alcohol available on West Street, enough off licences, we don't really need any more. And therefore it's not going to enhance the, the offering. But if you would, if the council will consider a cumulative impact policy, then at least something good will have come out of this meeting, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs Sefton. And finally, Mr Clark, if you want to just sum up very quickly?
Okay, the responsible authorities are experts in our fields of skilled knowledge and competence. And by not submitting any representations, it can be safely determined that they were completely satisfied with the application. The supports the licensing objectives and Sheffield Council's S O L P. Our conditions are precise and enforceable, they've been written in a prescriptive format. They've been tailored to the individual type, location and characteristics of the premises, they're lawful, unambiguous. And they're clearly what they intend to achieve, they're not standardising, they do not intend to, they do not attempt to duplicate any other statutory requirements or duties or responsibilities placed on the employer, employed by other legislation. Proportionate, justifiable and they're capable of being met. The applicant, Mr Fadil, is experienced, he has other shops in the area. And obviously we have a young, but intelligent and, and a competent DPS who has his own personal licence. And we believe that we've got a good application that's safe and sound and we'd like you to, or we would be very grateful if you would consider the, the hours and the conditions of the licence as being paramount to this, this application. And we would be, we would obviously be very happy if you would grant the licence on the hours and with the conditions that have been put forward. However, we would accept any further conditions that you may feel justified to increase the likelihood of a more, sort of, you know, sound application, if you like. Thank you very much for your time today, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Clark. Okay, that's the end of deliberations. Now, before we move into the private session, I'm going to ask the licensing officer to detail the options available to us this morning, James.
Of course, thank you councillors. So the options available to the committee this morning are to grant the premises licence in the terms requested, to grant the premises licence with conditions or to reject the whole or part of the application.
Okay, thank you. So now moving to a private session, I'm going to ask yourselves and the licensing officer to leave the meeting room. And we can call you back and let you know if you want to wait outside, thank you.
And to Mr Clark, if you'd like to just stay in the meeting, we'll, we'll leave the meeting now so you can't hear the room. You can either stay in the meeting. You can either stay in the meeting and when we rejoin, you'll be able to...
Okay, Mr Clark, can you hear us?
Yes, I can hear you, thank you.
Okay, well, thanks again, everyone, for returning this morning and making your presentations and your contributions. We have deliberated, we've come to a decision. And the decision is that we are happy to grant the licence for the hours from 8am to 4am. That it? Sam, anything else?
Thank you, Chair. Just to confirm, that will be communicated in writing to everybody and to you, Mr Clark, as well. The interested parties, as I'm sure you know, have the right of appeal against that decision, which is within 21 days to the magistrate's court. So if that were to happen, basically, the magistrates would sit, just as the members have done today, and take into account everything before them at that time and determine whether the decision members made today was wrong in light of all that. But I appreciate everybody's time this morning. I'm sorry to Mr Clark that he didn't quite make it after such a journey, but I'm glad the tech worked and we managed to get through the hearing. But thank you, everyone, for your time, it's much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for your time, Chair, and everyone else today, thank you.